Good evening, everyone. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. The time of the board regular organization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and the Two River Times on the bed at night twenty twenty three. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. Copy of this is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of Borough. Copy of this notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Send anyone to do your roll call, please.
Ms. Bush here, Ms. Cough here, Ms. Noel.
Here.
Mr. Bayolo.
Here.
Mr. All.
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson.
Eric, this is like a smoke bomb or something. Do you all rise and join me in salute to the flag? But we just. Folks, Chair, you ready to jump in? Welcome, everyone. Uh, this is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Old business, okay.
What do you mean, the board is in there? I think what we left it was, we understand the municipality is going forward.
Yes.
Has initiated a contract. I think both parties are satisfied with that contract and revised and a portion of that contract also includes work. Uh, by Mr. Verdello for the planning board and so. Recommend just out of form function to appoint him. And he's already on board and is here and ready to work. See, he's never really stopped working.
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, to approve, uh, Rich Verdella as the, uh, planning board engineer. I'll second.
Yes. Ms. Cough.
Yes.
Mr. Noel.
Yes.
Mr. Bayolo.
Yes.
Mr. Raul.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Olson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, so before we start with, uh, with the new business, we'll, we'll just get the administrative items, uh, completed. Uh, there were. Uh, minutes distributed to the, to the full planning board before, um, prior to this meeting. Um, I'd ask the board if anybody has any comments on those minutes or anything that needs to be changed. I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty one, twenty twenty three meeting.
Ms. Bush? Yes. Ms. Cough? Yes. Mr. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Bayolo?
Uh, well, I heard from that one, I think I, yes. 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 Um, the same can be said for the, the minutes from the March twenty first, twenty twenty three executive session. They were distributed prior to the meeting. Uh, does anybody have any, any, does anyone have any comments on those minutes? Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March twenty first, twenty twenty three executive session.
Second. Yes. Ms. Cough? Yes. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Raul?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes. Group, so, uh, we'll move on to new business, which is the Allen Street Hendrickson, Hendrickson Place. Uh, lot B forty five, L ten, eleven and twelve, zone R five, minor subdivision.
Okay. I can listen to counsel for good. Good evening.
Yes, how are you?
See, I want to bring all your witnesses to the law. Swear, wait a minute. We don't want so we don't like to disrupt your. I mean, yeah, make sure we're never dead, really. So I'm gonna swear that that's my. You saw us for the testimony here before one of the trip, the whole trip, talking about the truth.
I don't know.
When they asked that to you for purposes of record, state your name before you start testifying, spell your last name. And everybody can lower their hands down, relax and. We did march some exhibits from the records, we have those.
First book.
Okay.
Uh, so principally, uh, yes.
Let me do it because I, I've already seen it as Mark cleans up, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I made a publication which will mark as A one. I have proof of mailing, remark is A two. We have the application, it's like kind of some fifteen sheets. As A three, we have a tax assessor corresponds A four. We have two D descriptions, uh, A five. We have the sixteen valley. Valley surveying, uh, site plan, excuse me, yeah, the revised of. February nine, twenty twenty three, uh, the subdivision plan, minor subdivision plan. And then we also have, I guess, for purposes of demonstration, um. Site plan. Prepared by Andrew, Andrew Trokey Junior. Just see one sheet and elevation, sheet two, those are both November fifteen, twenty twenty two. We also have, he was. Documental margins P D one, which is, uh, H G A's, uh, the new application, David, eleven, twenty three, old stable signature, and we have a. For a year, Mr. Verdell's signature, where remark is P D two, dated April eighteen. Twenty three, consisting of two pages. Are there any of the documents that should be reported to?
Yes, we did a completeness review as dated April eleven, twenty twenty three, and then our, my planning review is dated April fourteen, twenty twenty three.
Thank you. One more.
Does anyone need hard copies of? The, uh.
My, that's not his.
What you got?
Yeah, we got, we got.
So I think P D one was the completeness review and then reckless P D.
I made a P D three.
So my heading review, P D three, that's fine. Want to make sure that.
Now I can get out of the way.
For those, thank you, Mr. Professor. That's great, that's great, sorry. Um, so for this, you're not aware who I am, let me explain, Gregory Cannon, the borough attorney here in Good Sound, uh, welcome someone and a service governing body. Uh, the property issue is, um. Your block forty five, lots panel level twelve, on which the borough is seeking to subdivide into new lots, ten point zero one and ten point zero two, which is. Demonstrated on A six, that's been invited to the board in the same plan. I brought the borough district here, I'd like to read some best of grand here, uh, today to testify, uh, to the board as the circumstance of the borough receiving this minor subdivision. Um, and, and frankly, for purposes of transparency, what will happen to the property after you subdivide. So with that, um. Lucy, could you please tell the board, uh, the background and now what led us here today? Can you share some?
Oh, yes, um, the borough of Fairhaven ultimately, um, in twenty twenty, um. Came to a settlement with, um. Reports in fair share housing, um, as part of our requirements, um, to provide affordable housing in the law in the borough. Um, we did so, um, in a timely manner, in so much as that, uh, there was, um, a builder. Who was actively interested in property in Borough and have filed, um, that he was, uh, looking to pursue a builder's rental lawsuit if we didn't negotiate correctly at the time. Uh, the borough retained, um, Mi- Michael Edwards from Serenior Edwards and Nolan. Uh, as our fair share, uh, housing attorney, um, and he guided the borough through the process of ultimately reaching an agreement with. Several parties, obviously, one was the courts, um, one was, um, Eminem Reedy, which is the current owner of the Snoko property. And one was Habitat Humanity as, as a partner in this entire plan. Um, the court master, um, had monitored this throughout the process and continues to do so today. And the purpose of today's, uh, application for the, for the borough is that as part of the settlement, uh, we have agreed to, um. Fair share unit in, um, of the fourteen units that Eminem is putting on, uh, as notice station, which is going to be next retail, the bottom, this above. And, um, Eminem agreed to contribute, um, hundred twenty five thousand dollars, one seventy five thousand dollars. Uh, in lieu of a second unit, which would then, third unit, which would then be used over on, um, the. Anderson, the borough designated, uh, an area there that the borough owned, that, uh, Habitat willingly entered into agreement with the borough as a, as a very. Well-known and reputable partner for affordable housing, and although the borough will be donating the land, the units itself will be built, uh, without any additional cost to the borough. It would pay for by a combination of the Eminem's, uh, contribution and, um, the, uh. Uh, Habitat Humanity has some funding available also to supplement the project. And, um, this is, uh, a conforming subdivision, um, we originally, uh. Boyed with the idea of putting it, um, on Allen, but for a variety of reasons. Um, we determined that it was best facing Pennington and that the lot in question that you'll see tonight, um, was chosen by the governing body. And they chose to retain, um, the corner lot as a continuing borough property this time. And, um, that's basically how we got here tonight.
Thank you, Teresa. And, uh, you have seen before A six, the site plan that was prepared by Valley Survey, correct?
I have, yes, sir.
Have everything. And so for, um. Do you, if the board is aware, it's in the R five zone, um, in the R five zone, um. Let the, the board know what the lot area required in the base for the R five zones. She's on the top left of the table on the search site plan.
Five thousand is going to be here.
And, um, over there on the. On the far right of the. Quote table there, uh, the borough's proposing eight thousand seven, seventy two and point nine two square feet, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, for the required corner lot, it's a little larger than the R five zone, seven thousand on A six, correct?
Yes.
And the, the borough is seeking to, uh, create the new lot ten point zero one, which will remain in Borough hands for the time being, at ten thousand six hundred nine square feet.
Yes.
Um, in addition, the footage, uh, is also conforming for the zone.
Yes.
And you know, is there anything about the subdivision of this property that would make it not conforming for the zone according to the plan prepared by the borough?
No. It's the one.
Would that, I don't have any further questions for this, please go back.
We do have some exhibits, I, I just want to put on the record, I, I might be looking for just doing a subdivision this evening. I know you submitted some documentation from, I guess, from the Habitat, if you wanted to, presumably to demonstrate that what you're proposing can result in something buildable.
Yeah, so this is, obviously, it's a minor subdivision, um, the borough was not technically required to notice this. However, the borough in, because this is a public project, we take, you know, the governing body wanted to be a little bit transparent, the neighbors, everything, everyone, actually, yes, we gave the notices all in. Um, did notices, though, this was, uh, required to be noticed. Uh, in addition, we provided architectural plans to just allow the board transparency into what the actual plan for the property is.
Okay.
You know, to come in here and say it's just a subdivision and we walk out isn't really fair to the public and on a rural project.
I, I just want to make sure they're on the record, three lots into two, everything conforming by way of the subdivision. But right here this evening, there is no site improvement being sought.
No, that will be the responsibility of Habitat for Humanity after the deep, deep, the lot is conveyed to them by the borough.
And so at this point in time, they don't have an ownership interest in it, although as per some of the settlement, it's, it's pretty much.
But I do, I do want to make clear that the, the borough's agreement with, uh, Habitat is, as part of the overall settlement. Is that they will receive property unencumbered, that they will not need to see variances and that anything that's built on there, um, will be. I, I, I'm certain they have the plan here to show you, but it will be built as matter-of-right as part of the settlement.
The, in short, the overlay zone for that was a part of the settlement deals with all type plan issues that would.
There'll be some racing that issues, I do know that it looks like there was at least one potential variance, one potential design waiver, at least on the documents they have, we're not addressing that this evening.
No, sir.
Okay.
Borough town is aware of that and as is our affordable housing, and I believe they have it covered, um, but, uh. If, if not, it needs to be amended to that, equipment travel take place subsequently.
Yeah, so that indicates that there were days plus, plus fixed and built hasn't right, so the borough will take care of that one layer or another as required in the settlement.
And I, I would just, I would just comment on the rest of the purposes of clarification, settlement or not. Creating these, so even though it's, it's the borough that's before you, any applicant that came wanted to divide a large parcel of land into two conforming lots. It's, it's pretty much a foregone conclusion that they're entitled to that relief unless there's some health or safety concern that doesn't appear to be addressed here.
Were the three previous lots conforming? Or, I mean, I know some points, but so they were not conforming, but now we're creating two conforming lots out of.
We're just crossing the line with any, any networks master plan or boroughs master improvements.
I also wanted to note for purposes of housekeeping for the board's, um, benefit, E five, the deep descriptions, um, our surveyor. Did not have those correct after submit to the board, so.
That looked like it was an earlier permutation, but again, that's not necessary to your application, you marked that, but in fact, it's good to note that. I think there was a, I think there was a. On one of the documents, there was a misidentification of what the interior lot was and the corner lot.
Yes, we're, uh, we'll put that around here, we'll make sure the board has it filed correct before.
But clearly, your representations are based upon documents that we took to look at before A six, that was all accurate.
Yes.
From state of affairs, it's being, and how will you get that to something now?
But you. So I, I had a few questions for, for, for Rich, so in, in Richard's letter, um.
Wanted to go through each other.
I think that's probably a good idea because I have some questions as to, as to what the implications are for, um.
Yeah, um. Obviously, after review of all documentation, I came up with a handful of comments. Um, first one, what I recommend is we do a site triangle, um, easement for that corner line, that's a typical procedure. Even though the borough's going to retain that property at this time, I think since we're here at the board, now's the time to do it. We can have our surveyors and leave a team, wrap that up and get that filed appropriately. And, um, you know, that's spelled out in the ordinance anyway, and it's always a recommendation, so.
Borough experiment was that. And we'll prepare, I'm self-prepared by a deep, you know, new, separate D to B, yeah.
Uh, the next item is really just a for your information, um. Even though we're not seeking any type of site approval, I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that the electric cable and phone, you know, the utilities, the standard, uh, above ground utilities are on the south side of Hendrickson. So having said that, normally what we like to see is, uh, builders or, or an applicant bring those, uh. Everything underground. Um, obviously, given it's. We know who's going to build a house, um, in my opinion, it doesn't make sense to put that burden on them and also to try to get across Henderson would be somewhat of a challenge. So just as a, uh, kind of an F Y I, that any connection is going to come overhead then, uh, to that new dwelling that eventually would get the.
If it came before the board, it would be an.
Right.
Correct.
A design waiver, it's not a variance, it's insane.
Yeah, it would not be a variance.
And there's no, there's no other solution that we can, we can talk about because I, this from experience, the overhead. Crossing a street with a, you know, with electricity crossing a street in a storm or other event has been problematic, I know.
It would be similar with some of the other houses on the street and, um. The only other solution normally would be to set a pole and that's cost, and then that creates an issue of just having the utility poles and, you know, aesthetics. So it'd be different if it was a five lot subdivision and it made sense to, you know, move some utilities around and get service into those lots, but for the one lot. You overhead, you know, it kind of is what it is, and that's.
And even at that, I think it's possible, there's no plan at this point in time to the corner lot anywhere. So.
Uh, the next comment had to do with the deep descriptions, we already covered that. Items four and five. Had to do with. Once again, uh, here from subdivision. Just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that there is a small, uh, concept plan, um, on the architectural, it's a location plan that shows a footprint of a dwelling. And the driveways and shows the deck, you know, some other features and. You know, some of the background on how we got here, we did have a, a subcommittee of, um. Work professionals, um, including your forward chair. And we worked with Habitat to try to develop some type of plan that made sense. And the off-street parking was always something that came up and. Given that it's a sixty foot lot, the design standard in our ordinance, which I referenced, uh, you know, thirty dash nine point two, B six D. Only one driveway would be permitted because of the frontage, anything less than a hundred and fifty feet. Um, once again, just wanted to bring it to your attention, these are, these are, these are two items that the borough would work through. Uh, through an amendment or, you know, the ordinance amendments, um. And then the other item was the, we have that twenty five percent rule, so the driveways can't be more than twenty five percent of the front yard. Given the two driveways that are proposed, once again, on the concept plan, um. You know, that number is higher than twenty five, so. I, I think, I think we're, we're okay with. How we're going to handle it, but once again, transparency, wanted to bring it to your attention, you know, not only as a borough engineer, but board engineer. And, you know, ultimately, this project will come before the zoning officer and go through the process like anything else.
So these items. Could be somehow remedied when they go through another, when they go through another process, these aren't, these aren't elements that would, that.
They wouldn't.
That speak to this, to this, the subdivision itself, so to speak, right?
And I, I don't think we're looking to seek any, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no formal action on those items, it's just.
No, I mean, what we're really looking at is really what's on A six.
Yeah.
They, they basically demonstrated to you from what was, you know, pre-existing to now two conforming lots, lot ten point zero two. Uh, to eight thousand seventy two point nine two square feet. Um, and block forty five lot, ten point zero one, ten thousand six hundred nine point twelve square feet. What you have for you there is what I would classically say a, a, a dashed footprint to show you that, at least conceptually, that within your bulk. Very bulk requirements, your set back, your side, your side yard, your front yard, bind. They're showing you something can be built and be conforming, they're not going to be developing something by way of a subdivision that you cannot build on, proposing that. Second step, and I think it's just more for information purposes now, because it's not before you, the applicant isn't here before you, the borough is simply to do the subdivision. To show you that, and by the way, we're a little bit far than just this sort of naked footprint, if you will, this is what we're going to, still, it's not all worked out, but pretty much it's going to be worked out. And it will have to be, you know, before, for majority.
I wanted to point out real quick that, uh, one in two family homes do not require site plan approval, um, if there is for some reason a bulk variance, then it would go before the zoning board.
That's why we spent the time to, to say that these hyper technical, it's like there's a divine waiver, hypothetically, there might be.
Right.
But it's not in front of you at this point.
So I have a question, I, I hear a lot of waivers and exceptions and stuff, which I understand, um, they still have to follow like building codes and things, correct?
Absolutely, yes. So the, the first step is to file the zoning permit based on what they propose. Um, and then they go through the process just like anybody else for building permits.
And, um, from what I understand, it's volunteer labor, maybe, you know, not skilled that can build the homes, I don't know if that's actually true or not, but is there, is there anything special? Is there anything special that this borough does to make sure that, you know, that it's? Um, I've worked on homes in this situation, um, and I would hope that someone would check my work, kind of thing.
No, the process is the same, they would, they would call for their inspections, you know, as appropriate and.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the couple, couple last items, um. Because the, the lot that we're proposing is sixty feet in width, fifty's the minimum, there's a provision, the footnote in the bulk chart. That says for every additional bulk, every additional five feet, you add a foot and a half to the side yard. So in this case, it's sixty, it's ten, you add three feet, so where. A standard lot in the R five zone, based on the zoning table, the total of the side yards is sixteen, you would simply add three. And that increases to nineteen. And, um, so that dashed line that our attorney had mentioned that shows, you know, the envelope that could be built within would be also revised as well. And, um. You know, that, once again, the table would just have to be updated, you know, on our behalf, this for the app. And then, as always, um, to your point, the process is going to be the same, not only zoning permit, they're going to submit a plot plan, which will show drainage, grading, store order management. That'll go through my office and we'll review it and work with them. Um, to see if those are, so that was it on my end.
Yes, Elena, would you, uh, would you like to go through your, uh, minimum and the elements of that as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure, so our, the first plan and comment we had is just to confirm the proposed numbering for the new lots, was there a course plan instead around from the tax?
Yes, tax, yes, the assessor indicated to me the quarter lot ten point zero one to keep the sequencing on these elements on the side.
Gotcha. And so ten point oh two will be the interior lot.
Respect.
Oh, okay.
For me, I, I don't mean to interrupt. Before we jump into your technical, your completers review had a number of waivers.
Correct.
And we need accurate numbers of waivers and.
We should, we should certainly address this and see, and we see a recommendation from, you know, the scare of us to whether or not you please the way we should consider the census.
Sure, so I can go through my completeness letter first, um, it's.
I think there's a, there's a lot of law that I, um, you recommended, most of them, you had a couple of comments.
Right, sure, yeah, I recommended that the board grant all of the waivers for completeness purposes, um, you know, this isn't a hundred percent affordable housing project, it's spelled out in your housing element and fair share plan, there's some ordinance that have been for the board because they. In the past, because they impact land development ordinance, um, since it's been a project in a long time coming, um, for purposes of just the minor subdivision. Uh, we just recommended that all the waivers be granted for completeness, um, and that, you know, should additional information be requested by the board, you know, they should provide that information or we can have a discussion on it. Um. And so that's pretty much my recommendation for completeness, um, some of the items were, that requested a, their applicant requested a waiver for, um. You know. Some of that information was submitted, uh, like preliminary architectural plans and elevations, you know, they requested a waiver, we ended up getting them anyway, so, um, you know, it's not applicable. Um, but, and some of waivers are pretty difficult waivers too, um, the Monmouth County Planning Board application, the property is not on the county road, there's no wind pack, um, the health department. Uh, it's not a public recreational bathing place, body art establishment and so on, it's not applicable, um. And I think for, one of the items that we just recommended as a condition of approval, um, is the public utility will serve letters. From the public utilities, just kind of stating that, sure, they'll be there, um. And I think. Do, have some money management plan, if necessary, um. There was a waiver request for the key map showing the location, we recommended the waiver be given for that item, there was a USGS quad map that was. Submitted and on the architectural plan that showed where they're kind of the adjacent property, dwellings are located, um, that was not applicable. Um. And so the one item is any existing or proposed easement or land reserve dedicated to public use, um, we do raise in our technical report, uh, a comment about just confirming that, you know, it's all going to comply with the affordable housing ordinance. You're putting a deep restriction, um, so I think that E restriction will be submitted at some point, it could be a condition of approval. Be a condition of approval, or, you know, it's essentially gonna be a continuing condition to be addressed before CO. Um.
That's already a condition, you can brush your number of understanding.
Yes.
Okay, so it's probably already there, you probably have, you just don't have.
Yes. Um and then. I think that's essential here, um other than, you know, landscaping plans, we'll, a Russian, that makes a whole plan, lighting plan. Um grading and utility plan, a lot of those items are more for a site plan application, where in this case, it's not. Just a subdivision, because of two family dwellings, um and so, given the nature of the application being a hundred percent affordable project. You know, we recommended that all these waivers be granted for completeness purposes.
Even though, even though it's usually a second issue regarding to subdivision, we do want to make sure that they're setting the service, which one.
Right.
Which is what the cover, I mean, will serve.
Correct. Make sure that, you know, utilities and everything can be provided in the site, which I'm sure we'll be able to.
Are you up for both properties or just the ones being built?
It's usually a standard layers with the do of your balls.
No objection in the attitude regard to, I think we're at now, we're at site triangle. Where I will serve runners, uh and it's documented in the news. In problems, on the, it's conditions in the Google.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so into the technical comments, okay, um. You recommended that, you know, you noted that on the architectural plans, there's some, you know, information about the lock coverage and. Lock covered from the habitable floor area requirement, um, you know, just for the applicant and borough to confirm that. You know, the lock coverage and habitable floor area was all calculated in accordance for ordinance definitions, so pretty typical comment. Um that we include in our planning review letter, um so is that your understanding is all exterior wall, the exterior wall? Okay, great, um. And then the proposed location of the dwelling on lot ten point oh two, whether it's proposed or conceptual. I understand, um where the architectural plan show the location of the dwelling on the habitat lot. Is that where that it's going to be located? Definitely your more conceptual this time.
I think, I mean, I'll, I'll look there off the table. Central and neutral.
Okay.
There's no, it's designed, that's pretty much what it's got.
Okay, we, we know the square footage and we, we know the general location, we've got on site. With the rich reference before.
And, and the reason the, it just is pre-urbanization, which have been, um the reason there's, the interior lot is bigger than it needs to be. Is because of the, those designs that you saw, your technical, two driveways and some.
Gotcha. And then just the, I think we touched based on this, but just the confirmable comply with the borough's affordable housing ordinance, it could be the E restriction.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, um and then as for, um. Are Barney and Trees proposed to be removed?
Um at this juncture, the borough's approach to the trees is we're like to keep as many as possible. Um however, we have tree expert that we will, uh at both expense consult on property. Um there may be some that, you know, either are um diseased or dying, or they're invasive trees. Uh or they're, they're in somewhat of a footprint where the house will go. So um the Habitat and the Borough have agreed to, to look at that together. And, and once we have a report from our tree expert, um a final determination will be made on the trees, I don't anticipate any trees coming down on the corner lot. Uh unless, you know, she might find borash needle or, or something on them and, and make a recommendation, but we're gonna. Our, our tree expert is Sharice Bow from uh CME, um and she will be brought in at, to consult on the trees on the property.
Just add on to that too, the reason the layout of the lots was, part, part of the reason why the lots was, was put this way. Is because there are a lot of mature trees on ten, proposed lot ten point zero one. And a very nice vegetated buffer with the first house on Allen, uh Allen. Street, um that will, that one the borough wanted to preserve, so that's also part of the. The ideas behind the layout of these two lots was to preserve as many of the mature trees and the existing buffer there for the neighborhood is, as exists today. You kind of see it on D six, when there's a lot more vegetation in the, what would be the back of line ten point zero one. And the idea was if we, instead of. If you do it the other way, all the trees go away and build the interior house, but if you do it this way, those trees all stay in the vegetative buffer between on Ellen, on Ellen Street.
And then.
Oops, I was gonna ask, and with the site triangle, was that gonna impact any of these, I mean, there's a few trees near the corner, but it doesn't look like there are many.
It should, okay.
We were, we, we've, I've locked it several times. I think there might be one over there on the corner, but, but it's not. Not that big, the, the real big ones are in the middle of lot two point, uh ten point zero one, and as you go back towards Allen Street, that's where the very large trees are.
Yeah, see a couple of thirty six feet, forty feet. Seems like we're making, seems like we're making an effort to save it, yeah.
And then for my last comment is, uh is any additional landscaping proposed at this time?
Um we have not really, uh gone over that with Habitat yet, um I'm sure that, um. They, their representatives here tonight can speak to that, but um I, I, we have a good working relationship with them and I, I'm sure they'll. Do their best to accommodate a landscape plan that is both attainable and fits the property.
And then I just kind of, you know, the lot number to the borough tax assessor, it's been approved, um and then just referring. Facilities grading, drainage, stormwater, board engineer. And that's it.
Yeah, so, so based upon the representation, we're gonna provide a section. The documents by way of an easement, um. Seems that the, the balance of the waivers are either no longer applicable or, or their demand is, so if they're a characterization. If not, tell me.
In the past, I know from doing previous minor subdivisions that, you know, the street trees waiver. Um you know, it's come up before a lot of times in a subdivision, you know, an applicant would generally provide them, um. So, you know, I, I, I think this is the time to discuss your three trees, but understanding that, you know. The corner lot's still going to be trapped as a wooded tract, essentially, wooded lot, um. You know, I'm not sure if it's necessary for, you know, the borough to add tree trees. I'll leave that up to the board's discretion now.
I, I also will tell you that the, you know, the borough is uh upgrading our tree ordinance. Um we're working with shade and commission, um we're actually looking to um have that fund. Available trees for planting in other locations, many times an applicant. Uh who was looking to take trees down their own property, for whatever reason, does not have the ability to plant. Uh adequate amount of trees on their own property, and, and so there'll be payment in lieu of, and that will hopefully generate funds for our shade tree commission. Who have active plans, you know, to look at, at tree planting throughout the borough. Um we like to stay away from trees in the right way for obvious reasons, but certainly, you know, they can still get a nice canopy if they set them back. And I don't look right away in that street, but, um and that's, that's our overall goal, and I'm, I'm confident that, that it. When, when it comes time to, you know, to talk to Habitat, if we need a couple of street trees there, um we can use shade and commission and get that with that.
So is, is there a reason you're seeking a variance for that? Is it because there's no room?
Um.
Driveway in the west. Yeah, it says you guys have all, like, uh, Williams thinks that the uh tree trees that, both, those tree trees. But they require.
From a policy standpoint, I'm just, we're, we're here, giving certain property rights, settle litigation. So, and we ask for waivers of every monetary issue that would have come, including the fees for the board and everything. The idea is to, the idea behind the entire settlement was to have the borough, um not pay a lot of money, so that, that was essential. Requested waivers of anything that will cost the borough money on that board.
Under, under the concept that your contribution to the property is the land.
Yes.
But if memory serves, Eminem owes the town four trees for the Snoko site.
That sounds right.
I believe there's probably one tree we're wrangling, whether they can keep, but I, you know, it's.
But maybe an excellent use of those four trees.
Good point, yeah, that is true, yeah.
That was kind of in the air, yeah. On where.
Where to put the tree, and I think, I think specifically for this habitat site, I think if either one or two trees are needed. For it, um as for the corner lot that's going to stay under borough ownership. I'm not sure if the street trees are really needed there at this time, um but I think, you know, we get one of those trees from Eminem.
You can see the empty space in the middle, yeah, and then there, there's. There's space to put a couple of trees in there, that would, that would do well with the canopies next to the mature trees.
And even just when you want a tree in the middle on the habitat site, we could drive ways. As a shade tree.
Let them see what they work out, the driver is definitely seeing this, right, design, design issue at this point could be the. The driveway is not enforced, right? Might be best to see what, what they find in the ball, the two billion, before we decide on your trees.
I have a big picture question, sorry, does, does this property right now, it's owned by the borough, so it's not paying property taxes, does it move to the taxable? This, or because it's a nonprofit, does it not?
It is set in accordance with the, uh, the restrictive value, so the answer to that definitely is yes. But not to those, what it would be made if it was, uh, not only four feet.
But it will generate some revenue.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way as part of this subdivision that we could request a, a plan for landscaping? From Habitat? We're talking about putting in one or two trees.
You're saying Habitat technically is not in front of you at this point, from what I understand, no, they, they will eventually have. Uh an interest in the property, but that entity doesn't have an interest in what happened.
Can we make it a condition of the subdivision or a suggestive condition that, because I.
I, I think the, the applicant is the owner of the property. Has to, if the borough wants to submit a landscaping plan, they could do that, but you can't. You really don't have jurisdiction to force someone to do something that's not for you and doesn't have an ownership interest right now. I, I don't think it actually will.
It's not required for single family homes regardless of who's the applicant in, in the future, a landscape plan. But this is.
Would that be?
Two family home.
Would that be something that would be required, or, or, or would that be something where we'd then be able to do that as part of the site plan?
It's not, one in two family homes don't do site plan. Only would you hit, when you hit a three family dwelling, then you reach, then that would require site plan. But one in two family homes do not require site plan, so it'd be, I believe.
Yeah, I, I would just like to protect the neighbors, that there'll be some kind of landscaping. That provides a buffer with their neighbors or just makes it more attractive to look at than putting in one or two trees. And you're taking down probably a lot of trees. But I don't know how we go about taking care of that.
Don't know that you can do it, of course, anyone other than the borough to do that on this application.
Because they own.
And there's no buffer requirements for subdivision.
No, and, and once the property is subdivided. Habitat does not have to go before the zoning board unless they were.
Unless they require some design waiver, variance or something else, or something isn't.
Our group's habitat.
And then. Issue not required.
The property will be given unaccompanied, and, and they comply for building permits.
But there, there are, we're, we're offering a design waiver on the overhead utilities, correct?
Right now, at this stage, we're doing that?
Do we know at, at this stage, yes, because, because the borough has said, yes, we're gonna do that, we're gonna.
And the wire's gonna wanna fit to me across the street, right, like, so there's gonna be a wire across the street.
So that's a design waiver that we're granting as part of the subdivision process.
Rich, you happen to know, I'm expecting, how, how many other instances of that we have in town? Where the wire crosses the street.
It's more common than you think, and, and a lot of it has to do with the location, the existing, the existing infrastructure on that street. And. The borough is not necessarily interested in having. Single family or two family, uh property owners, you know, boring under the roadway on the other side. Um to get to, to get service to that, to that new dwelling, go to that renovation project, whatever it may be. So, um, it's not a variance, it's a design waiver, and, um. You know, we work with the developers or the applicants, the homeowners, when they come in, um try to figure out solutions, we actually go out there sometimes in the field. But this was just something that I picked up through the review, um. Even though it's just a subdivision that's lot look front on Hendrickson, and when it gets developed. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that, by the way, utilities are on the other side.
Is there a standard for height on that when it comes across?
Yeah.
What is it? And I'm thinking only because I think the brush running site is at the end of Henderson.
I, I think, I believe it's dictated from DOT, I think it's fourteen or something like that.
But there's, there's, you said there's more on the street that are like that, so I, I don't just, I'm honestly just thinking about the big trucks during brush running. That's, that's not, if they're gonna, it's gonna. Clear that, I mean, I guess it's okay, but, I mean, it just, it doesn't seem that, I mean, I think if the new standards to bury lines. Little piece of survival out doing that, yeah. I mean, I know you said why, because you haven't happened of having somebody. Or in the street.
In this case, to incur the cost and the coordination to do that. Cause it's, it's not done by the power company, it's done by the owner of that property, which we know who the eventual owner will be. The utility basically just hooks it up, oh, you would have to run the conduit up to a certain height, and then the, the utility takes it from there. So, um, the overhead is a much simpler, cost-effective way. And like I said, if we were talking about multiple homes, different story, it's, it's one single.
We'd be in the same boat if we're talking about a private home, although that happens as well, right?
Yes.
And you'd be the conversation of, is it cost effective for them to do that, they apply for a waiver, so they didn't have to do it. It'd be the same conversation.
It is also an affordable housing site too, though. I just wanna make that, it's a hundred percent affordable site.
Right, so the, the thing that concerns me is A, so, so is A the safety issue and then B. The, the fact that we're, you, you know, setting a precedent, right, like, and not requiring it. And I'm thinking of neighbors, I mean, if, I feel like the neighbors would, if they had a choice, they would walk the lines very put.
Are there any neighbors within two hundred feet? That have the same situation with the overhead wires?
Yes.
So any truck that would pass under these wires are passing under other wires.
All right, yes, in fact, I believe some of those wires are probably lower than the eighteen foot standard. The other way is we can simply amend the ordinance to allow, rather than. You know, that's a recommendation, if, if we've got other design exceptions. If this is something that.
It's something we talked about, I've seen, we're here as represented in the mayor council, we talked about.
We just want you to feel comfortable that, this is, this is the reality of it, it's an existing condition and to build a house. You know, kind of is what it is, um and based on the affordable.
Yep, and it isn't, you know, it isn't your housing element and fair share plans in your settlement agreement, there was an ordinance adopted that was implementing. The settlement and agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, um, this property is going to be, you know, a hundred, two. Affordable units, hundred percent affordable, I think one's gonna be your rental, so the borough is going to be getting, I think, three credits from that. From this project alone, one for the, um, owner occupant unit, and then one, two from the rental with the bonus rental credit. So it is, you know, fulfilling the borough's affordable housing obligation.
And who will own the rental unit?
Well, it will be all, the placement of the, we don't know who's going to be put in the units right now. Um there's the whole process, you have your administrative agent, you have to notice it, you have to select. Find out who qualifies for the, whatever the, um, income level is, the one. Income level is. The one unit will be a very low income unit. Um, one of the requirements of the settlement agreement is that thirteen percent of all new affordable units need to be very low income units. So this will satisfy the borough's. Um, very low unit until I think we hit. Six or seven affordables created, so it's a, it's a needed unit, um, the very low, and I believe the very low is going to be the rental unit too.
Yes, it is.
And then the other unit, I believe, is going, what is the other? The owner occupied unit?
It's moderate, and, and just so you know, um, this is twenty twenty-two uh, affordable housing income limits. And all the documents written, this is all public record and, and, and have been, you know, continuously posted on the borough's website and available to the public. But in Monmouth, Mercer, Monmouth and Ocean County, which is region four, a, a moderate income family of four is a ninety-eight thousand dollar. Income, uh, that'll be owner occupied. I mean, and many of the people who, you know, live and work for the borough. Um, you know, make less than that. Um, and then the very low uh, for a family of four is thirty-six, seven eighty-five.
But I guess my question is, so we don't know who's going to live in that, but somebody's going to own the rental property, right? The, the owner occupied is going to be owned by the Habitat. Person that.
Yes.
Gets, gets the home.
And that will be your moderate income and they will own it and they'll have to, you know, follow all the rules of the, the borough as far as maybe.
Does Habitat, humanity own the rental unit or does it go to?
No, the owner of that property will own the rental unit and it will help, will help offset their mortgage as they will buy the house.
I see, okay.
Yeah.
I see.
And there's all kinds of rules in your affordable housing ordinance about resale values and how much it can be increased if it ever changes hands, um, you know, it's not. I think with what a lot of us are used to seeing in our houses, you know, that one. For sale five years ago for one price and today they're, you know, almost double the price. This, it does not, that does not usually. Apply to the affordable for sale units, like they, there are restrictions in place. That they can only be increased so much in value.
Just so the board knows, Karen Goo is the borough's affordable housing planner and assisted us in, in all of the. Documents that went along with this.
Betsy, did you, we cut you off there, so I want to make sure you didn't have anything else to finish.
No.
Your point. Okay. I, I see there are members from the public here and, and so I, I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity. Oh, your attention, go further, please, thank you.
Thank you. My name's Matt Glenn, I'm from, I'm from, I'm from, I'm from, and I'm all dozen, I'm checking a lot, a lot, except.
Please, yes. Yeah, voice talks always into the, I think, be sure of us.
Did the repeat, Matt, me calling my wife Christina, one twenty-eight Maple Leaf. We're in the neighborhood, um. So the Habitat lot will be the lot on the corner of Allen and Hendrickson, is that correct?
No.
It's in the interior, one in front of the corner?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, um. I don't think so, I'm wondering about, mind if I ask that part, is it? Ten units or two units?
I don't even.
Very, very.
Two years.
It's one, one structure, two units.
So a two family house.
Yeah, family home.
I thought we were talking about like a, a ten apartment.
The idea, the idea here is to have the structure blend with the rest of the neighborhood while still gaining affordable. Right, so you'll be able, and the driveway layout, um, that'd be laid out. Um, and the reason it's turned that way is because if you go down the street. The driveways will be kind of using the space so that the second bracket on this house. Um, will match up with the rest of the neighborhood. The idea is to make the house blend in as. Um, unless you don't really go close to notice two driveways and that sort of thing, that it'll look like the rest of the house, I'm sure.
The Sinoco lot is the, is the other affordable housing project that is more like ten units.
Yes.
Got you.
I just wish you would. There. In fact, I'm hoping that just, I just received the letter for the first time. Two days ago, the, the one thirty second, all this government, it's on left, left. It, it started years ago and has been. Talked about it in, in any number of public meetings from the governing bodies, the planning board. It's been settled in, it's been advertised, the ordinance has been advertised. It just moved here two years ago, so that will reflect playing catch-up with all this and because it's obviously going to be affecting us a lot, because it's. Very close. But that's what I want, I want to make sure, it's actually the details, but I think. Uh, I'm glad to hear that it's three years and there were like ten or more. But I appreciate, and one of the former, I believe. That was mentioning about the, the planting or the aesthetics or the, because it doesn't affect everybody else as well, is. We don't want to have to. I guess the same person, you know, who's going to be. Owning that place and I don't know what their rules and their relations are for that. How is it that you actually pick the person? And.
So, um, so the court restriction here is that it's not substantive housing. So substantive housing is if your government pays your housing, we bear the responsibility for the physical shot and that, where they, is affordable housing. So just like you got deed to the house that you purchased. Um, the person who purchased this house will get a deed, but will have restriction for what they can resell that property for and who they can rent the other unit to. Um, those requirements for the incomes that you've heard are run uh, by the municipal housing lease or functioning or administrative agent. So people will have to apply, have to meet criteria, they'll have to, they'll have application score and it's done on a, um, you know, fair and open basis. Because it's open to the general public as a power in New Jersey. Just to give you, bring you up the scale, I don't know where you guys moved from. So in New Jersey, every town has a constitutional obligation to provide for affordable housing. Um. I've seen enough, to get on your head, not more all that. In twenty fifteen, every uh, municipality, state co, the co-over revolved. Every municipality had to apply to court for certification that they were, they were fulfilling that constitutional mandate. And so the legal settlement that you've heard us talk about was a function of the builder of the Sinoco lot suing and wanting to build more and, and larger. Um, function, except for the building committee suit is. Uh, and the borough countering with a plan, what with affordable housing, to then get immunity from the remedy suits. So that the control of what is built in your town is determined by the people that lived here or sitting up there or on the zoning board. Versus um, by a court, go to judge who's going to write in, well, it could be four hundred units in a town that clearly doesn't need a four hundred unit building. Uh, so that's the purpose of the, of the, of the, of the, the machination with the borough if they're, and indeed receive certification as a result of that settlement. Um, to the affordable units that are in the old Sinoco station and these affordable units that are proposed here in that plan. So that's how we got here to today.
Thank you for the background, that's all. Um, so all of this, just for one, two family house, is that correct? Or are there other? Two now, are there other affordable housing?
So the Sinoco station is where the other affordable housing will be in the multi-family building there.
And how many units there?
Two.
Two there also?
It's fourteen units and they've set aside two.
Oh, it's fourteen unit, well.
Four, four, the, the majority of them are.
Most use.
It's used, the majority of them.
Okay, and third floor retail. Of the fourteen residential units to.
Yeah, that, that, that's not before, as you see.
Yeah, right.
Already done, that's the dwelling of engine saying that all the money will.
It'll look the same as any other house in the street. It's designed to blend in with the neighborhood.
It's our plan, yeah.
Um, if I may, I'm Doug Ann Kinnane, I'm the executive director of Habitat.
Are you?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know what you were saying.
Great question, I have something totally unobvious, but that is, I'm going to recall it, okay? Um, Kane, K I N N A N E. Um, I just wanted to assure all of you, all of our homes have landscape plans and our last four homes were landscaped by the Garden Club of Fairhaven. And they applied for grants from the Garden Club of America. And I can't tell you the generosity of our local nurseries to provide um, plantings and just about all of them have trees. Um, so you could go to our house in Rumson, our homes in Atlanta, Collins or Long Branch and check out, um, you know, the landscaping. So we do try to do our best to respect the privacy of their neighbors and, uh. Yeah.
Thank you.
I just grabbed a little, so kind of national.
You take mine. Hi.
Yeah, exactly. That's all I wanted to see, where, where would be built.
Can I ask, what's your, can I ask?
Thanks, Pragala.
Can I ask one quick question before?
Yeah.
You happen to have the address of the Rumson project?
Sixty-eight Black Point Road.
Sixty-eight Black Point, thank you.
Uh, D A, Pragala, we're twenty-six thousand two, we're here in New York for twenty-two years now. Um, we're next to one. So basically, I think that's right, uh, about the Habitat, the humanity, um, landscaping, thank you for bringing up that, so. Um. I helped build those houses through work, um, and again, they have to pass codes and everything, but I guess. When you guys are filling out the paperwork for the landscaping, you just go for random donations, doesn't have to be the Garden Club or anywhere, so.
Um, it, it's been the Garden Club, because it's been a great sport, yeah, um.
But it can't be anyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's good. Um, I, you guys answered all my questions, these guys' plans and it looks like this is set, so. It's better than a self challenge, that's right.
I want to thank the members of the public for coming tonight, because I know that. If you don't have the background, new to town, it's, it's sometimes a daunting thing, but if you did the right thing, come in and ask questions, it's worth it, so, thanks for coming. Any, uh, do, do any other members on the board have any questions or, uh, comments to make on this application?
So. So, but your application is, I'll, I'll frame, I'll frame an application, because I'm printing both now, um. This is basically a, uh. Subdivision, basically three lots and it's two conforming lots. Uh, ultimately for the purpose, as they say, conforming use there, beginning with, once we use to provide testing in that, that. That, that structure, I want to be clear on that, it's not before you receive, this is simply the subdivision. Uh, subdivision, this is, is the average, as I said, by base, so their approval process. If they have any problems in supplying, uh, will serve letters as a condition for approval. They'll provide you with copies of an easement that are applicable to the property. They will also. Uh, agree to place, or give you documentation in deed. And deeds, very exciting angle, uh, for the property. Then you've had representations and I guess we can discuss that, that the applicant will continue in their discussions by way of. Landscaping and tree plans as they go forward or not, we, we can address that somewhat, if, if the applicants don't can move that kind of language. Um. That's really your, your application, really, any other position associated with it, it's pretty broad, you know, we have buildings though. For transparency purposes, you can give them a glimpse of what looks like, probably be something like that there, but that's not before you. That's your application, it's pretty straightforward. A yes vote is, if someone will. First, that, that resolution, and second, a yes vote is a positive vote for that, which is not expressed.
I'll make a motion. Okay. You were first. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Didn't know.
Okay, um. Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Carr, that's. Colonel?
Yes.
Mr. Beal?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Olson?
Yes. Patient is true.
Thank you very much for your time today.
You're good.
Um. Make an open closing meeting.
Well, you, you can still open up for public, oh, any, any topic whatsoever.
Any other? Did you want, do you have another, uh? Mr. Glenn, Mr. Glenn, did you have another question?
Yeah, not too distant, but I asked.
Uh, deep site renovation, we live right next to it, um, on April.
Okay.
And I know it's been in the last, since I'm dead, is there anything you would tell me about? There is about the deep W site renovation. Is there anything you would like to tell them?
Um, yeah, I, I, I before, because I, uh, I was a, you know, it's, it's basically the right, that's the matter, now.
Yes.